Heard Lisa. Was still trying to uh get formalized, right?
Okay.
Lisa has let me know that she is going to be focusing on other things during this time, so is going to step back. Um from participating.
Oh, no longer uh uh trying to be a commissioner.
Correct.
Okay, I will fill.
Here and we had two other people that were interested and they decided also.
They dropped out as well, Lee, yeah.
Is there a reason? I mean, why does it sound like too much work or what's the problem?
Uh, no one ever told me I had extensive conversations with them. Uh, and I have actually, uh, I guess we're uh. Uh, you know what? Uh, why don't I call uh this meeting to order? Uh, we will not vote on anything until Wendy joins. Uh, but we do have three out of the four commissioners, so we could uh do that if we needed to, but. Uh, I'm going to call uh the meeting to order, I think, uh. Uh, I don't know what time it is, uh five seventeen. Uh, and uh I'll do a quick visual role role call. Uh, we see Lee is in attendance and Robin and I, Bob Furger, am here and Elizabeth, thank you as always. Uh, and Wendy, our fourth commissioner, uh will be joining us later, so uh. With that, I will continue the conversation. Uh, several of us have had lengthy talks, Lee, as a matter of fact. I understood but haven't spoken with you that one of our potential. Uh, uh commissioners of those two women was having lunch with you and and knew about uh. The commissioner and your work at Duncaster, so uh.
We'd never had lunch because she uh was not well that day and I haven't heard from her since, but I I have met her. I think she would be a wonderful addition.
Well, I'm hopeful that maybe they will come back, but both of them bowed out. Uh, Lisa, I guess, is not attending. I have met with uh one other person uh a week before Christmas. Uh, and she is interested, but not enough that she's applied yet. Uh, so I won't uh go into too much detail about her in less than until she. Wants to show interest and I have uh uh another, but uh it's, I don't know why. We all seem to be on our best behavior at these meetings, so. Uh, I guess people just aren't ready to commit to this. I don't know, any other thoughts that any of you have?
I have an observation that if we get the one percent, uh they'll be standing in line to get on this commission.
Well, uh, that is our hope. Uh, we can certainly do that and I will, I will fill you all in on. On progress on that when we come to that uh agenda item.
That's kind of the way money works, you know?
Yes, that's at your, so rightly, uh, money follows money, doesn't it? Yes, so uh I guess our uh looking at our uh agenda for this evening. Um, the park bench, which really is uh uh something that's in. Standstill, uh, I mean, we all drive by and Elizabeth, the old library, I believe, is still standing, is it?
We are actually no longer in standstill as of around seven thirty AM this morning. We got the demolition permit yesterday afternoon and things have started, so I invite everybody to.
Wonderful.
Drive by Prosser, um, we're really excited and just as a reminder to the community, um. There was no salvaging the building. We had to rebuild and so, yes, it is sad that the building is being torn down, but. In its place is going to be a modernized um state of the art library and we're really excited for that.
I think we we are all thrilled, that sounds marvelous and uh. And very modern, uh, which is in keeping with uh what we're discussing. Our mission is uh here in the Art Commission to make this community. Uh, more fun and and active and and modern, so. Uh, that's great, so we will keep the park bench. Uh, uh, item uh is a, is a placeholder. Uh, I think we've determined that uh it may be too complicated to try to salvage trees, but we still. Uh, ultimately, when the building is going up, uh, we'll want to discuss putting benches uh at that site. So we would uh keep that uh item on our list. And next, uh, we can move right to the uh one percent uh for the arts and I'm. Uh, most recently, I I sent you all a. A draft, I hope not too late in the day for you to uh read it or at least uh quickly glance. Uh, I'm calling it percent for the arts, uh, week, uh, but i- in my drafting so far. Uh, because maybe we don't want to limit it to one, maybe it's one and a half or whatever is recommended. By uh our commission and also uh uh I will uh give you background of the uh. Development uh Commission and Development Authority of the town is actually very excited about this. And do want to uh um incorporate it in the uh town uh planning document uh going forward. Uh, we're doing our, uh, I don't recall, Elizabeth, you might know, uh, whether it's every five years or ten years, we. Are obligated by stat- uh ten, yeah, obligated by statute and we're in that uh place right now. So our timing could not have been better, uh, i- if we had brought this up next year, it would be too late. So I have uh forwarded it, you'll see, uh, my CC is always to uh Bonnie Berkowitz, who is the Chair of our Development Authority. Uh, I'm the Vice Chair and uh she's very excited. We were supposed to speak about it today, but uh we've rescheduled for a session tomorrow and she has already. Notified our town planner. That this is an agenda item uh and will be uh put in front of the uh town planners and ultimately the uh. The town council, so it's moving. Uh, this is more than uh simply a a a a wishful thought. Uh, and I welcome uh obviously all of your input. Uh, Robin has given us some very helpful suggestions in drafting and uh. You as well, Lee and Wendy, when she is able to join us, are welcome to uh add your thoughts. I will recirculate it to all of you when we have professional input, which would be, who will this apply to? What should the size of the project be and what is recommended for um? The amount to be set aside, uh, but as you saw from what I circulated, um. This is a well-established process nationally, there are dozens of communities that do this. There are uh model ordinances and statutes, sometimes it's adopted at a statewide level. We won't attempt that yet here in Connecticut, but if we could do it in Bloomfield, uh, we might interest others uh to uh. Follow our lead, uh, no one in Connecticut has done this yet, so uh.
What question?
Please, Lee, go ahead.
Our met our, I, the communities you're talking about nationwide, are they the size of Bloomfield? Or are they much larger or both?
Uh, both, uh, I don't know, uh, by size, I mean, our population is.
Well, you know, the kind of, are we, we're talking big, big cities or are we talking smaller? Towns like Bloomfield that also have this kind of thing?
I think both, Lee, uh, and there's no uh limit on this by uh statute or ordinance. It could be uh uh towns smaller than we have. Uh, I will say for the most part, it is bigger cities that can swing a much bigger uh golf club. And uh, and say, y- you want to put up a uh a skyscraper in our town, you're going to uh contribute to the arts. I'm personally familiar with uh Houston, which has done this to uh extraordinary level. I mean, with the most famous uh uh artists in the world, Calder and John R. Uh, but uh smaller communities uh like ours can say, look, uh, we want you to uh. Contribute to a a ten thousand dollar sculpture i- in in front of town hall. Uh, there's no limit to it, what the limitation will be.
Playing devil's advocate, I think, and uh anticipating what someone who doesn't. Want this is going to ask us, so we need to.
I agree with you.
Ammunition available.
We need to research that and uh we will uh. Uh, I I will, and you're all welcome to as well, uh, go into this in. In greater depth and detail, uh, I am certain that uh, and it must, if it's an ordinance, come before the town council. There will be a vigorous discussion at that level of, will this discourage builders? And will people say, no, I don't want to spend on the arts, I'll go to uh Newington instead. I rather doubt that uh is gonna fly because uh, you know, to be uh blunt. Uh, you know, a uh, a eighty million dollar project, which is what uh Cigna uh did uh recently. Uh, would cost uh all of uh, am I doing the number correctly? I think uh uh eight thousand or or so dollars in into our uh, our titty. So uh, we uh, we want to push, we'll push and, but your. Words of wisdom are well taken, Lee, uh, we want to uh be forearmed and um. Certainly, except for the uh. First introduction of this as a concept, we are very far away from doing presentations that um. We will be challenged on yet, but uh, thank you, uh, Wendy, uh, welcome. We were just uh, as you could probably tell, discussing the um percent for the arts policy.
Yes, sorry, I'm driving, so I just wanted to make sure I was here, but I hear you, yeah.
We, we do appreciate that, thank you very much and uh. Uh, Lee has made some comments, you probably heard, uh. You, Wendy, are welcome to as well and and Robin, uh, if you have any thoughts on this, please, this is the time for discussion.
Yeah, I would.
I recommend we push for it, I don't all the way push.
Good, good.
I second that, yeah, I don't see why, you know, just given the size of the town, we shouldn't, as a matter of fact, push even harder than. You know, a big city might, um, and as a matter of fact. Uh, thank you, by the way, I mean, I think it's wonderful that it sounds like you're getting a real positive enthusiastic. Input from the Development Authority and I noticed you added your executive summary. And I like the fact that you're talking about the fact that Bloomfield is obviously going through this big economic expansion. So, as you said, I mean, the timing is ideal.
Yep.
All the development, not just the library, uh, but it continued building of these. Luxury apartments in the center of town.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I'm sure I'm missing something, but you know, obviously a lot is happening in Bloomfield, so. Why not, you know, continue to to emphasize this whenever we can? Um, and I just want to say, I I'm still interested in attending, um, perhaps the next Development Authority meeting, just, you know, to listen in.
Yes, any, anyone is welcome, they're open to the public and uh, then the next one will be uh next Tuesday. Uh, I don't have my calendar, calendar in front of me, I believe that may be the ninth, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And uh, meeting uh is uh, is uh like this, streamed for the public and starts at. Eight thirty in the morning goes for an hour and a half, so you're welcome to attend any portion.
Can I also add too, Bob, before you move on, I do know that that um. The cannabis, the, you know, the growing facility that they're talking about on Granby Street. There was a huge push to put public art on one side of that or something that was beautifying. Rather than having that big, having a large gray building, so I do know that was um. Recognized as maybe putting some sort of artistic work on there. And maybe we could jump on that train with those people that are building it, you know, but definitely the need is there to help beautification and.
I think that would be wonderful, Wendy, and perhaps you could uh find out more information for us and. And uh, uh, give us a little report even uh before our next meeting, you know, offline, uh, whatever you can hear and I will. I will bring that up at the um Development Authority meeting next Tuesday, thank you.
Because they were TPZ, had, that was a big question with them is how was it gonna look? And they discussed, we discussed, or I did it, but people discussed putting public, you know, some artwork, like a mural of some sort. As opposed to just trying to plant, you know, is far cheaper than trying to plant or put up fencing, you know, things like that, that is beautifying.
And I I can uh uh report that um, uh, i- it is uh not, not officially filed, so uh. Uh, we don't want to get too excited, but uh, it i- it is in in the public. Uh, knowledge, uh, Trader Joe's is planning to build uh a new market in Bloomfield on Bloomfield Ave. And that's going to be a very large uh.
Yes.
Uh, retail uh uh development anchored by Trader Joe's, but with several restaurants on site. Would be an another uh wonderful opportunity for uh, for um. Uh, art to be onsite, it's a multi-acre development. Elizabeth, uh, were you about to say something?
That's amazing, is what I'm about to say.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, I did not hear that and that is so exciting.
Well, it's, it's a ways off from construction, but they did present a month ago. To the uh Development Authority, so that is out in in the public domain now that they spoke of it. Uh, and a very serious development with uh a developer who has uh uh built twenty or thirty, um. Going off the top of my head, Trader Joe's specifically, uh, nationwide. Uh, I'm very excited because we shop there, um, so um. That is going to be uh another major uh, major project where we could um. Put our hand in and say, hey, everybody, uh, is, and you know, it's not original with me, but I did highlight in the executive summary. Art is good for business.
Oh, one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
If people come to see it, they enjoy it when they're here. Uh, and uh, it is an attraction for the developer. To say, come see our, our art, our show, our exhibit, our fair, whatever it may be, so.
Where Bloomfield Avenue would it be located?
Uh, if you recall, there was a um. Uh, I I may have misspoken, uh, 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 I don't believe it's spoken, it's Cottage Grove, Cottage Grove, you know?
I was gonna say.
The ice cream place that was going to uh be developed, it's not on that site, but the one next to it, a vacant land next to it.
Wow.
Prime location.
What's it going to be besides Trader Joe's?
Uh, at least one, possibly two or three restaurants and uh uh ancillary small shop retail. So it's uh, if you're familiar, uh, and uh, I I'm going off the top of my head here, so. Uh, I I'm not authorized to talk about it, but um. The model is uh very much like uh uh Evergreen Walk in.
Yep, yep.
Uh, which is much, much bigger than this, but uh also uh the the um. Uh, little shops a- and restaurants that are out in Simsbury, uh, I don't recall the name of that project, but where uh. Where the restaurants are uh i- i- out past uh uh Canton. Uh, so it's that model, uh, walk-in uh shops rather than a mall. Uh, one or two restaurants and anchored with a big, big uh Trader Joe's, this is not going to be a small facility. Um, yeah, so it's an opportunity for us uh to speak up uh on that as well. Any other thoughts or comments, and as I said at all times, uh, I welcome uh. Input from you i- in writing as well as uh uh verbally uh on this, on this project. It's one I've been interested in uh for two years before we formed the commission, so, you know. A- any further discussion on that topic? Okay, well, uh, we'll move on, I'm just going to consult my agenda here, pardon me. The next, I believe, is our um. Well, uh, it says field trip, but um. Uh, I don't know whether we have another in mind, does anyone recall whether we wanted to do another field trip? In the near future, midwinter, or were we going to wait, Robin?
Uh, we had talked about the Windsor Art Center. Um, actually, I think that was something you had brought up quite a while ago.
Yes, I didn't know whether we were ready for that or.
Yeah, but uh, I mean, I'm, I'm open to it, I would, you know, I mean, depending on everybody's schedules, I know it's a difficult. Time of year, but uh. Uh, I just, as a matter of fact, I went for the first time uh just before Christmas. And explored both the studio area. And then the Windsor Art Center itself, which was holding both a music event simultaneous to a phenomenal photography exhibit. So. It's cool. Uh, setup, it's not very big, but it's very.
Right, right. Well, we'll come to that uh shortly in talking about our own uh little uh uh presentation and and festival that we have in mind. Uh, a- any other uh um thoughts or or interest in doing that and and when? Uh, Wendy or Lee, uh, I'm certainly very eager and available, uh, if we can find a time.
I just need to throw out some dates because I'm always, i- it's just a matter of when. Just because of business travel and that, but if you throw some dates, I can try to work around them, you know, whatever is best for the group.
Uh, well, uh, let's each uh think about some dates that we might have available and share them, I will do the same and uh. As we did last time, we can exchange what works the best for everyone. I think that would be a great idea and give us some uh a boost on some of their ideas uh that we wanted to pursue. Okay, moving on, uh, uh, our next item is the Directory of Artists. Uh, I believe at this point, everyone has actually shared a list. Uh, and uh wonder whether uh we have some thoughts on adding to it. We um, we had said that many of the people on our individual lists also know others. Uh, so perhaps we could expand by um uh tapping some of those contacts. Uh, and Wendy, I don't want to put you in the, on the spot, we were not able to meet last month. You had said you might be able to help us with with organizing that, bringing it all together.
So I was, what I, I was interested when I looked at the list that is out there, so. I would like to just come up with a theme that we could put on the community pages. And even through Elizabeth's library page where we just have like a calling all artists, just some real quick thing and have people. Put their name in that would like to be part of our directory and then come up with a way that we could. Put the directory together, whether it's by a genre, whether it's alphabetical order, I don't know how. That's where I'm a little ignorant, how we would put the directory together, but at least just continue, because some of the artists that I know of, I saw Donna Hubs. I saw in some of the ones that people put through, but my next thought is to just calling all artists to put together a directory. You know, a local directory of artists, but then people are gonna say, well, what are you gonna do with it? So I think that's where I just want to be able to be equipped to answer that question, like, we're doing this for. What purpose, not that people won't, but so that they understand what we're putting it together for, is it.
I think that's a very fair question, uh, why don't we discuss that right here? Uh, what uh each of you uh thinks we we could do with the list, uh, you know, being. Being thoughtful and careful with people's names, uh, go around, a- anyone can start uh on a suggestion and I think your idea would be great.
Other question too, how do we get addresses? If we plan to contact these people to be a part of our projects, if, for instance, we have an art show or something. Getting addresses is not as easy as you might think. Go back to the nice phone book where everybody's address was in there. Not there anymore and can't find people's email address very easily. So what good is a list if we can't get a hold of these people?
Well, I think that's an excellent point, Lee, uh, I'll start by speaking from my own list. I only put people on my list who I know personally, so I would reach out to everyone on my list.
Well, I could do the same, I knew that I know these people.
Yeah, uh, perhaps we could each do that.
And ask for this information and that gets complicated. And I don't necessarily have their phone number either. You can go to websites and find some things, but.
Right.
Trust me, it's hard, I've, I've, I've go through this with contacting artists for Duncaster and uh.
Sure, yeah.
Well, why don't we each uh start in with.
And people don't have landlines anymore, they have cell phones and that's even harder to get.
Why don't we each dig in to uh getting whatever information we can for our own personal list that we contributed? Uh, and see if we can come up with emails uh or uh land addresses and phone numbers. And uh, by the way, of course, uh, when we contact them, ask if we have uh their permission to share that. Information publicly, uh, I would believe uh. Uh, that we could uh tell people and we should formulate, as you said, Wendy, one consistent message. Uh, that we're going to use it to contact them, to tell them about art events. To invite them to participate if we are having a call for artists or a show or a fair.
Exactly, and that's kind of what I wanted to, you know, put out there is, we would like to get that, so if we are looking at a project, you know. I don't know, over by the pickleball court and we calling all, you know, these are artists that we thought might want to provide some artwork or give us some insight. Then at least we have contact information or just a, a reason that we're collecting the information, not just because we're collecting it for the heck of it, that's all.
Yeah, well, I'm going to jump ahead, oh, please, Lee, go ahead.
Message is that it's Bloomfield, we just have Bloomfield artists. I think artists might be more receptive if they know that that's what this is. It's just not artists in Greater Hartford, it's Bloomfield and we are hoping to. Perhaps have shows of Bloomfield artists or some kind of display. That's get, that gets artist juices going, so anyway, I think that that's key, that this is just Bloomfield.
Yes, yes, uh, absolutely, and uh, uh, we can come back uh to this next topic in in some more detail, but. Uh, we have had some preliminary discussions uh to have a little uh art exhibit and uh. And uh multiple art forms next spring at the Oliver Philly House. So that would be, for instance, an ideal, and we all know that, we went and visited it and uh uh know what's involved there. Uh, that would be an ideal example and first place to gain people's trust. To say, uh, we're announcing this arts event and people on this list will hear about it, so.
Want to make another suggestion because I have learned. That the Bloomfield schools are going to have their art show at town hall instead of Duncaster. Well, we survived, we've got another school, but uh, that tells me the town hall is available. For art on their walls and somehow they keep it secure and and it happens. There's no reason we can't open that up to Bloomfield artists as well. I don't know who you go through or how you do it, but. When I was in town hall, getting sworn in. When I was in Town Hall, getting sworn in, I saw that there were lots of white walls that needed art.
There are, but also.
I would second that.
In my uh, in my seventeen years here in town, I have, uh, well, before COVID. Uh, seen exhibits of uh art, including students. Uh, on the walls, uh, on occasion, a number of times, so it is doable. Uh, um, we are uh as. Sadly, and I won't go down this road, but uh, uh, in a familiar. Uh, situation here in town without a town manager again. Uh, and our acting town manager has retired for the third time, and he's entitled to do that. Uh, and so we uh are still searching for a town manager and there's a little bit of. Um, disorder in government and the approval. Uh, at the, at the, uh, you know, uh, professional level as opposed to political. Um, but Wendy, perhaps, uh, if I may, ask you and tap you on the shoulder to uh. Come up with some sort of a short proposed uh sentence that describes what we're doing. And circulate it to all of us. Uh, we would appreciate that and uh also. Uh, encourage each of you to um dig in and even if it's out of your list of ten, get two names. Uh, with addresses, it will be a start. Uh, and we should also um. Uh, ask anyone on our list if we know them, uh, would they please uh tell us about others in town? Because I know that uh there is a definitely a network in that in that regard uh across many. Many um modes of art. A painter may know a weaver, a weaver may know a singer, so we should really expand that. Any other thoughts? Robin?
Can I just say, regarding these concern about um home addresses? I personally don't think it's even necessary for us to include anybody's physical home address.
No, that's true, yeah.
I agree.
Really, all we would need, because we'd need to contact them for invitations or requests for art. Would be an email or a cell phone number. Um, as far as I'm concerned, those are the major modes of communication.
I agree, but those are not going to be easy to come by either necessarily.
Well, but if you.
Well, all we can do, Lee, is ask. We can ask.
Yeah, I I would say if you know the person.
I do think in our speech, we should have. Kind of a a sentence or two about why we're doing this.
Absolutely. I mean, and that's what I think Wendy's, to Wendy's point, that's absolutely necessary.
Well, that's what I just asked, you know.
Yeah, and that's what I did in my email even to personal friends of mine. You know, there's a poet friend of mine who I simply explained what we were doing, what we were attempting to do and. She very gladly is sharing her information, but not her home address. There's no reason to have the home.
I I fully agree.
For that, no.
Yeah, I fully agree. Wendy, can we ask you to kind of take a first cut at at drafting that?
I will.
Great. Thank you so much.
Does that mean we should send the information we have to Wendy?
Yes, although uh um if you have additional information, by all means, Lee, uh, uh, all the information we've. We've provided, uh, I collated and and forwarded under the uh topic, the directory. It's on our uh. Our our attachments for today's meeting. Yeah.
We should send it there.
Yes.
I don't, okay.
And uh, I believe. That um. Our next uh uh topic was projects to focus on uh in this fiscal year. Uh, and we had uh spoken in the past about uh the uh the bus shelters. Um, and uh, Lee, I think you took an interest in in that. Uh, do you want to tell us whether you had an opportunity or any thoughts on um? On getting uh getting that going. I happened to uh run into a a at a retirement dinner, the uh. The president of the West Hartford Art League and told him we were interested. He encouraged us to uh. Contact them for information on how to get it done.
Did you talk to Roxanne?
I have not spoken with Roxanne, but if you would.
I sp- I spoke with Roxanne.
Okay.
And finally, uh, and quite frankly. She's not awfully interested in helping us here with my perception. She said, this is what I do for a job and I can't just do this for someone else. She also asked me questions that I did not have the answers to. How many bus shelters are there? I don't know. What's your budget? I don't know. She said to me, we know each other pretty well. What exactly do you know, Lee? And I said, not much, I guess, and I Googled how many bus shelters and I could not find out. But anyway, uh. I also, the important thing, I've said, do you have written instructions about how this works in West Hartford? To which she said, no, I cannot believe that. She has to have. She said, we put out a call for artists. Anyway, so I guess on another. Note, you had said, would I be the project? Person for this, and I'm going to say no. I'm certainly interested. I will help. I will not take on.
No, that's that's quite fine. Uh, no, whatever information you have found, uh, we can each. Uh, pursue uh some angles on it. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I was not able to be on the uh. The tour, if you recall, I guess it was last summer already. Uh, but when you looked, my recollection was there were only two or three. Uh, bus shelters that were eligible, so it's hardly uh the.
They not be worth the trouble, you know, it it's big in West Hartford. But it may not be worth all the effort, and Roxanne did say to me, anyone who knows Roxanne. Knows that she is always extremely busy. She does a great job and it's the West Hartford Art League is a. Great organization, but she is always overwhelmingly busy. And uh, she said, this is not an easy thing. So, I don't, I'm not saying we should give it up, but maybe having. An art display is a better way to go in the beginning. I don't know, but uh. I'm discouraged at this point and and.
Well, we can hear that and but that's not going to stop us, Lee.
As you could hear.
We're gonna.
I I need, I need to bone up on my enthusiastic response.
No, 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 and uh I personally, and I can't speak for anyone else, respect. Uh, that you're not uh not eager to take it on. Uh, uh, but um, uh. We we can each uh find out some information and and pursue it. Moving on. From that, I don't want to waste too much of our time because that is uh like the uh, the park benches uh. Uh, on a list, not necessarily a a project that that we're ready to start. Uh, but we do have a project that we are ready to start, and that is of the exhibit and the show in. Uh, the spring. Uh, uh, Robin can fill us in a bit more, but I can. Give a very quick gloss. We have been in touch with the the custodians of the Oliver Philly House. Uh, and they are very interested and eager uh for there to be an exhibit and I will. Uh, give a full disclosure for everyone's uh discussion and and vote. Obviously, I will not. Vote on it. Uh, I've been invited to be one of the artists to contribute work to this show in the spring. I hope it does not present a conflict. I would not be doing it in my role as a commissioner, but only as a a local artist who. Has art uh ready and available. Uh, Robin, do you want to tell us?
Sponsoring that art show.
Uh, Robin, please go ahead.
Well, yeah, if what we're doing, Lee, is we're talking about working with Ironwood Community Partners, which is Vicki and Dale. Um, whom you met, went to the open house there.
Yes.
Um, so we're talking about a couple of things, uh, having it be perhaps. A weekend-long open house in the house itself uh to display artwork. And perhaps even in that open barn area, and the idea being that Bob. Who has already agreed to perhaps be the initial uh exhibit presenter with his collage work. Perhaps, I mean, again, we haven't set dates. We need to discuss this, obviously, as commissioners, but. You know, the general idea is to maybe have it be a weekend-long event with three different artists. Bob would be one. Um, I've already sent an email out to contact a local Bloomfield. Uh, poet who has just recently published a book of poetry to do a reading. I'm hoping to hear from her soon. And then the third idea would be, you know, have three different things, actual art, poetry and music. And then I was thinking of uh contacting, if you all agree, although I haven't done it yet. Um, unless you have some other ideas and suggestions, um, Tony Harrington, who's our deputy mayor, mayor. I was told by a friend and neighbor of mine is a singer and has a jazz group, and I thought, well, how cool would that be? If, say, on the second or third afternoon, you know, he performed.
Be charged to come to this, or is this free?
Well, that's.
It would be a free event.
Yeah, I mean, I think, why not have it be a free event, but we do have money that we need to spend. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, so and Tony's group, I think, you know, we can't just expect them to perform for nothing. And perhaps even.
Be certain now or so that the the art would be secure and.
Yes, uh, let me jump in and address a couple of uh points you you've asked, Lee, and and are important to know. Uh, uh, first of all, uh, my art is available and I would do the uh. Uh, moving of it and hanging and all of that, uh, so that's, take that as a given. Uh, Robin has mentioned uh uh a poetry reading, uh, which would be a wonderful. Uh, way to say, you know, uh, there are all kinds of art and not just hanging on walls. Uh, she has uh mentioned Tony Harrington, but I also have broached the subject. Uh, w- with Walter Guardiac, who has a a jazz ensemble. And Walter lives on Doncaster Road here in Bloomfield, and he's interested, so we might even have. Two musical events over the weekend, something during the opening on one day and and a concert of a different sort on another day. Uh, and the funds for this would uh really only. Uh, uh, be required for uh producing invitations, perhaps brochure, something very simple and inexpensive. Robin has uh indicated that she would be available to help us with that professionally, uh, and uh. Well, the last point is, we do have a five thousand dollar uh budget from the town, which has not been spent. Not a penny, and if we don't spend any of it, we lose it by next July. So we do have some funds available to uh, uh, the idea, everyone, is to kick this off and say. Hey, we're the Arts Commission, we're presenting this as an event. Uh, almost, I think of it as a like a mini festival for free uh to the public. And obviously, uh, public beyond Bloomfield, but we would uh publicize it uh first and exclusively.
Wonderful idea. I also have a question, having been in the house. Is it, it's going to be safe so that, you know, the public is coming into this? And it's a little rickety. Are 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 we okay about that?
Well, I'll ask Robin to address that, I believe, and I spoke to.
Somebody has to take into account if somebody falls or all that kind.
Well, if we can address that and and Robin, uh, if I'm correct, you are the chair actually of uh Ironwood, but. I spoke with Dale when we visited, and when they have events there, Robin will address it in more detail. They get insurance, and uh if we have to help pay for it, uh, we could uh look into that, but I believe. Robin, why don't you explain what you do? You have had events there open to the public.
Yeah, we've had a couple events over the last year during the pandemic, believe it or not. Um, it valid. Point and question, Lee. Um, only the first floor would be open. Uh, they will not allow. The public to go up onto the second floor. You've been there now, so you know, yeah, it's in rough shape. Only the two, two of the rooms would be available on the first floor. In addition to that, that. Additional barn building that does have a new roof on it, that could potentially be opened up, and that's what. Um, we need to talk to Dale and uh further about, uh, but that's my vision was that that space. Would perhaps be where um the poetry reading could be held with chairs outside. Which is why we're thinking, you know, hopefully in the spring uh before Memorial Day weekend. But as a commission, we've got to, you know, come around and and figure out what would be the best possible. Dates or dates, and of course, make sure that the people we're talking about, including, are available. Um, but yeah, the house, obviously, only those two rooms. Um. And then as far as the budget, Bob, I was thinking, we, you know, we would also need to rent chairs, perhaps even. You know, some tents or umbrellas, perhaps.
Uh, look into that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking. If we get this directory together, wouldn't it be wonderful to send out an invitation to all those artists?
That's the whole idea, Lee, yep. That's precisely the idea.
Look what's possible.
But we can, beyond just the directory, as far as.
And to say the Arts Commission actually exists and is functioning and doing things. And as you said, uh, I believe, right at the beginning of this meeting, uh. Uh, people respond when things start getting uh known, uh, and whether it's present for the arts or a little. Arts festival that we are putting on uh in multiple uh media. Uh, and uh, we, uh, Robin and I have discussed with Dale, um, and Vicki. Uh, uh, preliminary conversation just in the next week or two on this subject, so we want to get started and of course, we'll report. Uh, back to the commission uh on all the details. Robin, is there anything more you can or would like to tell us about that?
Yeah, just one other thing, as far as marketing, when we did an art and architecture tour. Um, I think what was effective to get the word out townwide was we produced. And I designed some postcards uh and just literally placed them in every place we could think of. In town, the library, the town hall, the leisure services building. Um, that's an easy and relatively cheap and effective way to promote. Uh, the event in addition to, you know, having a write-up in the Messenger and even the Hartford Current.
And I I might add, uh, we'll have to look into it, uh, and perhaps Elizabeth, you would. Uh, know or have a comment, uh, because it is being presented by uh an actual official town body. We might have access uh to uh spreading the word and announcements through town channels. Whether it's on our uh our website or I don't know whether the library would be uh uh able, we'll explore it. Not asking for you to commit now, but we could get the word out in a variety of ways. Uh, more so than if it was a a private organization which would have to go out and pay for advertising.
Curious, I'm curious and don't answer this if you don't want to. Do people read the Messenger much?
I read it.
Oh, I do, because it's, I I need to, but uh. Is that a good way to publicize things? What what's your opinion?
Just one way, Lee.
Yeah.
One way of many.
There's multiple facets in town that you can get things around electronically, so I would not. That without spending hundreds and hundreds of dollars on mailing, like mailers and stuff like that, so. There's so many different, but my, I only have one other question, so would. Like any engaging artists to come, would we be showcasing? Only your work, Bob, or would we be looking to showcase others, or are we just? Only your work, Bob, or would we be looking to showcase others, or are we just doing?
It would just, it would just be my work, and I, and I should disclose uh, my uh. My wife, uh, who uh, passed away five years ago, was also a watercolorist, and we would have uh. Oh, uh, four or five of her uh, works there as well. Just because uh, my work is available, we don't have to go soliciting it. It's free, uh, I live and, and have means to move my art down the road. Uh, you know, in a matter of five minutes, uh, so uh, it would be a good question, Wendy. Uh, not trying to solicit additional artists and judging that, that could be for another occasion. Uh, maybe we'll do it again in the fall, maybe we'll do it, uh, you know, several times over this next year. But this is just a kickoff, simple, free, no charge. Uh, except as, as uh, Robin accurately said, we might have to. Uh, pay uh, a nominal, I mean, more than a few dollars, but a nominal honorarium to uh, jazz performers. Uh, but uh, yeah, it would not be uh, uh, more, more than uh. Uh, the two, uh, two graphic artists and uh, and uh, music and poetry.
Yeah, I think I just want to add, uh, Wendy, that uh, yeah, this really is just to kick things off.
No, that's fine. I'm just thinking of how you get people to attend, that's all. You know what I mean? How you. How you help broadcast it. I think the other, that, that's all, and when someone says, why only one artist, I just want to sound knowledgeable.
As Lee said, uh, we start off with our director.
It's a, it would be a poet.
Right, right. Oh, agreed, agreed.
He, Bob's. Um, but the marketing, I, just so you know, when we did these. We had a pretty decent turnout. I mean, we didn't, unfortunately, we didn't.
I think you will to this. I don't, I think you'll be surprised. Who, people like to come out for arts, we just don't do a lot of that in town, so I think that. You would be surprised that people do come out, and it may be a way for us to engage or ask what people would look for, but. I would agree.
Well, in this would, on that point, Wendy, be uh, in the intent. Uh, i- in some ways, uh, a, a, a publicizing event for the commission. This would be the time where people could sign up or leave their name, or say, I know an artist, and we could add to the directory, we could. Say, we're planning more events, give us ideas, and, and we all know this, but Robin made the point. Uh, we, we make an extreme effort.
Our. Did I interrupt? If this is going to be kind of our. Get to know the Art Commission. Let's make it good.
Well, that's the objective, Lee. Uh, I was just finishing the, the one comment. Um, we don't want to fall in the trap of saying, uh, collage is art. Or sculpt, excuse me, pardon me, or sculpture is art. Uh, but arts, as we are a commission, include everything from.
Yeah.
Painting to poetry to music to dance, that's all art, and that's our. Uh, our mandate and our mission. Uh, as you say, Lee, we want to uh. Spread the word, and, and we have for really years already. Been saying, how can we collect names and signatures and people to, to uh, show interest? This would be a way for people to show up and show interest and leave their contacts with us. We would uh, uh, generate some uh, some materials, lists, written sign-ins, all kinds of ideas that you'll come up with. To uh, to say, uh, let's get the Art Commission going.
When do we have to use that five thousand dollars by?
By June, right?
June thirtieth. June thirtieth. Yeah, so we're, we're gonna have to go, you either spend it here, or you, we come up with two things to spend that money. Otherwise, we will lose it. I mean, that's a nice chunk of money. I thought maybe finding a spot, like when we went on our tours, I thought we were trying to find a spot to try to engage. Getting something, you know, getting a spot for public art with that as well, using that money.
We still have that in mind, uh, and uh, I, I might uh, add that part of uh. The game, I'll call it that on the record, of uh, spending budgets is uh, pre-authorizing and spending. So if we don't uh, have to uh, pay for the chairs until May twenty eighth. We can submit to the town that we have uh, engaged. Uh, a, a chair company to the tune of X hundred dollars, and that will be allocated out of our budget, so we can. Uh, pre-allocate uh, certain items to say, we're spending these, even though uh. Uh, the bills won't go out in, in, until later in the spring.
Some of the money would obviously need to go for the marketing, meaning the print material.
Yes, yes.
Hers.
Oh, one hundred percent, yeah, right, exactly, exactly.
The people we invite, meaning the poet and even if the musician or band, or, you know, if we're talking about an ensemble. You know, we have to obviously ask them or determine what we're willing to pay them.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and we would, clearly, uh, we would pay, for instance, I haven't pinned it down, but I, but I know them quite well, the uh. Uh, New England Jazz Ensemble, uh, it might be a few hundred dollars, and they would do it for less than their. Normal uh, fee for, for a paying concert, uh, is uh, as an act of artistic goodwill in the town. To help kick things, kick things off, that kind of thing, so we, we would, uh, it would. Uh, be surprised, surprising if we don't wind up spending a few thousand dollars before we're through. Uh, in, in the spring, yeah.
No, I, I want to make sure we do. Don't take it for I don't want to spend it. I want to make sure we spend the money. We spent five thousand dollars on this one project, I wouldn't be upset by it. I. I just want to use the money that we're allocated and so that we keep getting more money, rather than it staying up. They don't need it, let's kick it somewhere else into somebody's.
Well, and just as, just as important to say, we did it, we spent it, look what we did with it, uh, we're asking for it again next year, yeah.
Yep.
Well, just, uh, when I checked Tony Harrington's uh, site. If I recall, it looked like, and this was at the low end, for. His band to perform, the low end was about fifteen hundred dollars, so, you know, that's just FYI.
For how long, for how long with, with that fifteen hundred dollars?
Question, I don't know, but I don't think we'll have trouble spending the money, we just have to move on it.
Well, I would, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, is move rather than discussing, like. If it's what we want to do, reach out to these individuals, find out what it would be to have them and lock down dates, the earlier we lock down dates, the better. Because then we can get that information out to the public, the closer we get, the, you know, the harder it becomes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I believe, and, and again, and this triggers. Are, are moving quickly, uh, Robin and I are going to be talking to Dale and Vicky in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and I will talk to the uh, uh, Guardiacs about the jazz ensemble. Uh, but uh, generally, uh, these fees for. Uh, jazz groups are for a whole evening's concert, so if we have them performing for an hour or two on an afternoon, perhaps they'd be. Uh, kind enough to uh, you know, to um, uh, charge us a reasonable, but, you know, a real fee, but, but. Maybe not fifteen hundred dollars if it's only for an hour, yeah. Yeah.
It's also publicity for them.
Oh, yes.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent.
So if we can say we're marketing this to get people. To hear, do we want to in some way include food?
Absolutely, yeah, we, well, that's why an opening evening or opening afternoon.
Hmm.
Would be, would might lend itself to that, Lee, like the wine and cheese cocktail hour or afternoon. Um, just, again, to launch it, you know.
Yep, yeah.
Just as you are doing to make it attractive to people who want to come.
Sure.
Exactly right. Any other thoughts or comments on, on that uh, topic?
Good for you, Robin. Keep up the good work.
Well, it's gonna take all of us, my dear.
I know, we're all there, but you're getting it started.
Well, I just feel like, you know, it's, it's a good time, as Bob said, and it's a good opportunity to at least get some, something. Done, that would be fun, and, you know, for all of Bloomfield, you know, however we can. If we can pull this off, I think that would be, you know, terrific, and then maybe more people would recognize.
You know, but I have a feeling that that site is a place that people want to be in and see. Is that true?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's why this, I've now been part of three or four. Open houses and events there, and the first one was the Art and Architecture Tour. I mean, people came out of the woodwork, because everybody who lives in town and is driven by there and has been curious. You know, is wondering what the heck is going on with this beautiful, abandoned.
Well, our, if you can make it safe, I'll market it big in Lancaster.
Well, that's why I was excited.
So we old people don't trip on something.
Yeah, Robin and I discussed it, yeah, yeah. Uh, it's, uh, and I have had my, as a neighbor, I've had my eye on that building for. Years to eventually, and I did speak with Dale, actually, that afternoon we were there. Uh, um, see if it could one day become an art center. Uh, for the town, uh, as you all probably know, uh. The West Hartford Art League, which we, we keep looking to as an example, is not an agency of the town of. Uh, West Hartford, it's a private organization which has a lease. On the, their buildings, they do not own those buildings, but they pay a, a dollar a year for a hundred years. Uh, for the use of those buildings, and uh, it is conceivable that one day. Uh, the um, Oliver Philly House might serve at least that. Uh, purpose in, in, in some regard in our town, so that could be an exciting first step. Anything else on this topic? We will, of course, share everything we know and learn and hear. All right, last item on our agenda is to uh, look at our uh, our minutes from, I believe, it's our October meeting. Uh, I hope you have all taken a quick look, and uh, I would ask for a motion for approval of those minutes. Anyone?
Move, I so moved.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Um, last item, uh. When we uh, had uh, those two ladies who were considering becoming commissioners. Uh, we had circulated the idea of changing our time. Uh, to accommodate them, but needless to say, we're not, so if it is uh. Uh, in everyone's liking, and I throw it open for discussion, if not. Uh, we will continue to meet at this time, uh, and, and date of each month. Now officially, uh, because Elizabeth had to uh, set these up as special meetings in twenty-three. In twenty-four, these would be our regular scheduled meetings. Any question, objection, or comment on that?
What day are, so what day are we, I know we keep switching them around, so what day are you suggesting?
Wednesday of each month at five fifteen, first Wednesday of each month.
The first one, okay, that probably will be. Five fifteen is just tough for me, like I'm getting off of work or I have to stay at work, but I can do my best to get on, at least like I am now in the car.
Well, that would be great, that would be great, and Lee, uh, in deference to you, we. Did uh, pick five fifteen, is that still an okay time, and uh, you?
I'd love to go back to three o'clock or wherever we were, but I'm game.
Yeah, well, we're trying to accommodate as many uh, commissioners.
At three o'clock, I will.
Well, and I think to accommodate the working people, we should do later, so it's fine.
Can we get a motion?
Uh, I'm fine with the five fifteen, Bob, I think we do have to be mindful of people who have day jobs, and if we have new.
Yes, especially as we recruit uh, new people, yeah.
Can we have a motion on that?
Yes, uh, please, uh, call for a motion to approve our uh, our meeting time. Anyone?
To approve the meeting time.
My second.
All those in favor, uh, the motion is uh, on the floor, and seconded to meet. The first Wednesday of each month at five fifteen in the afternoon, and we do try to limit it to just one hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much, very active and, and delightfully uh, busy meeting. Uh, and I believe, uh, to satisfy Elizabeth, in our rules, we do have to call for a motion to adjourn. So again, uh, anyone, please?
I motion to adjourn.
My seconded.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Be new here to everyone.
And same to you all, and we will all try to be in touch before our next meeting, uh, at the beginning of February. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Bob and Elizabeth.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.